I call this special meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on August 24, 2023. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you're free to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kim Brady and the Pledge to the Texas Flag led by Eliana Garza-Rojas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, we are officially two weeks into the new school year, extremely excited. I know board members have been out on campuses and we're really excited and you can feel the excitement in the campuses with the students and the teachers and all the staff. It's been a great start to the school year and tonight we are excited for the start of football season. So you can see we've got our Newman Smith shirts on. Go Trojans! And tomorrow night, Arl Turner plays, so we hope to see you at the stadium either tonight after the game, join us, or tomorrow. So as a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to the goal of high expectations for all. The Board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the Board in open session, with exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, Board members present are Tara Herbochek, Sally Derrick, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza-Rojas, Randy Shakeman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. Item number two is District Announcements. Dr. Eldridge?
I just want to thank Ms. Garza-Rojas for getting me my Newman Smith shirt. I will put it on after this and be at the game as a team. I also, just looking at our district update, want to thank Tracy Eubanks for providing tours of Metro Crest and we're going to do some great partnerships together for our students, so that has been great this week. I too have been out on campuses and seeing the energy and the excitement and meeting crying parents that are dropping their kids off and, but the kids are, their shiny happy faces are always a delight to see. I also want to just reassure our families that we are monitoring the weather for these football games, whether they're home games or away games. I know there were some concerned parents, but we are providing water and making sure that the conditions are right for our kids, including moving the game back 30 minutes. So game was supposed to start at 7:00 and tonight will be at 7:30. I also wanted to update you all that the district, we have been partnering with the Rotary Club and providing books for their international literacy campaign as well as our local campaign, so it was exciting to hear today at Rotary Club that we're partnering together to help our kids, so that is always great. We're going to be starting an attendance campaign that Every Minute Counts, so Ms. Parnell has made bookmarks and we're really going to make sure that everyone's in school learning. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Eldridge. With Every Minute Counting, we'll continue on to our next agenda item, which is Audience for Guest. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so during this agenda item. Ms. Canada, do we have anyone wishing to speak at this time? All right. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, a public meeting to discuss the 2023-24 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. The time is now 6:04 PM. As established in the Texas Education Code, Sections 44.002 through 44.006, the process to adopt the annual budget and tax rate for the Texas Public School Districts includes a lawfully posted public meeting during which our constituents may participate. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of the group, of a group, must have submitted the request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table just outside the boardroom door before the start of the meeting. Following the presentation, you will be invited to come up to the microphone and speak to the Board according to the forms and the names received. Comments should pertain to the 2023-2024 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate and be no longer than three minutes. Mr. Guerra will begin with a presentation before we open the floor to comments from the audience. Mr. Guerra?
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, and the rest of the Board. Okay, so just tonight, we're going to obviously present the budget and tax rate for adoption, so I just wanted to go over kind of what the agenda is. We'll talk briefly about school finance, we'll talk obviously about the general operating budget, student enrollment, our property tax values. We'll break down our general operating budget by the function, so you can see where everything goes. We'll talk about the tax rate, you'll be adopting the Student Nutrition Budget, the Debt Service Budget, and we'll talk about our fund balances. And then the one thing we did want to talk about is our strategic abandonment strategies, the stuff that we, if you remember from the Board Workshop, we had a couple weeks ago, the stuff that we implemented from the Board. We started to implement a lot of these strategies already, so as you, we'll talk about tonight, we'll sell, we'll go over the things we've done and what we're continuing, what we'll continue to do. So just to talk briefly, like as y'all know, our fiscal year starts September 1st. I know schools started already and it ends August 31st, and how it coincides with the calendar year of January to December, so we have to close out our books in August, which kind of throws, you know, things off a little bit, so it looks a little squirrely sometimes how we operate our, our fund balance and our general operating fund because it has to close out at the end of August. And one thing that we will keep an eye on this year is we heard yesterday, as you know, there'll be a, possibly a third special call session with Congress, which is, they said they were looking at middle of October, I believe, so we're keeping an eye on that and hopefully that something will be done. They said 100% the agenda item will be pure school finance, so that we're hoping some school finance reform and some recapture reform as well. So tonight, like I said, we'll be adopting actually three different budgets, the General Operating Fund Budget, which is the MNO Budget, we'll adopt our Student Nutrition Fund, which is federally funded, and the Debt Service Fund, which is our INS Fund. We'll also adopt two different tax rates, the MNO Tax Rate and the INS Tax Rate to support those two funds. Okay, so before I get started, I just wanted to thank Giselle Rivera-Franco, who's our Executive Director of Budget. As you know, this is a month, month-long process, she'll say it's a year-long process. She actually works in three different budget years, all year-round, so she's always in the prior year budget because we're doing, you know, adjusting entries through December, really. We're working in the current budget and we're always forecasting for the next year's budget, so her job is year-round and she does a really good job, so this is a month and months of work. I wanted to get her to get up here and talk, but she didn't want to, so she let me do it. So, okay, so the General Operating Fund, as you know, it's the all-incoming expenses that we need, that are necessary for the school district to operate, such as salaries and benefits, utilities, equipment, supplies, all of it's paid for from the general fund. So the operating general fund obviously comes from different sources. It's through property taxes, local revenues, and state and federal allocations. And as you know, it's a $344 million budget and that's based on the current basic allotment of 6,160 per student. So when we start doing our projections, when Giselle started running her numbers, we looked at how we ended the year. So last year, that ended in May, we ended with a student body count of 24,909 kids. So that's how we started and based our budget on this year. Snapshot Day is a big day for us. Last year, our budget at number was 24,766 kids, and you can see by snapshot, we were at 24,817. So we feel pretty, it's an aggressive number, 24,909, but we feel we're increasing every day and we feel we'll be pretty solid once we hit Snapshot Day. So as we talk about the budget, I just wanted to remind you that this is the surrounding school districts that we showed that are adopting deficit budgets as well. We just wanted to reiterate that, I know CFB's adopted it, Mr. Shakeman knows, years ago we had deficit budgets as well, and it's not nothing new to the district, but something we haven't done in a while, so we just wanted to show you that it wasn't us just doing it, we asked all these surrounding districts and they're all adopting deficit budgets. And our meeting yesterday was pretty clear with the Senate, that, with the Congressman that we met, that they all knew that it's an ongoing problem with school districts because we give raises every year, you know, inflation's 19.7% over the last five years, so it's been really difficult to manage keeping employees, paying bills, and keeping the district afloat with the same basic allotment. So this is the, the broken down, general proposed budget, this is the column on the far right, and you can see, after recapture, we're estimating we're going to generate about $276 million of revenue. And our expenditures, as we talked about, like I said, what I wanted to bring up is, when we had the budget workshop, we had proposed like a $12.9 million deficit, and like I said, since we're constantly scrubbing the budget, we're constantly looking at where we can cut, where we can save, whether it's through attrition. We have new directors, new assistant supes that are helping watch programs and staffing, and we're looking at all these things constantly, so just from the time we had the thing, we ran new numbers and you can see it's went from 12.9 to 9.8. So the deficit's already decreasing and like I said, we're, like I said, two weeks in the school, so it, we feel pretty positive. Like I said, we'll run numbers, we run ADA constantly, we run our attendance constantly, we're watching our bills constantly, so we will keep analyzing programs and we'll talk to a little bit more in depth as the presentation goes on, but you can see how we've already started to decrease the deficit that we're estimating. So again, when we start looking at it, we're looking at, with Ms. Brady here is our tax assessor, she's in attendance too, but she's the one who collects all of our tax money, she's the one that really gets the district running, so she gets all our values, and you can see we went up from 29.2 to 31.6 million, and this is even after the $100,000 homestead exemption that went through, and even with, with tax compression, we can see we're still raised in our tax values. So to kind of give you a graph what it looks like, last year we rose almost 13%, and even 6%, 5.86 is still a pretty significant amount considering the size of our property tax base, we still went up almost 6%, and again, that's after the $100,000 homestead exemption and tax compression. And as you can see here, this is pretty telling, even though the tax compression was significant this year, and even though the homestead exemption hit in, you can see we still, 86% of our revenue comes from local, global, local, local property tax values. So this is the budget broken down by function, and it kind of shows you how we operate as a district. You can see the first section is Instructional, Instructional Support, which is all the campuses and everything that's directly dealing with kids. You can see it's 65% of the budget, right off the top. So the operations side is everything else, the utilities, security, building maintenance, you know, lawn maintenance, transportation's in there, recapture's a part of this number and it's about 32% of the budget. And recapture's significant, it's 16%, almost 17% of our entire budget goes back, goes back in recapture, and recaptures well over 53% of that 32% of the second part of the And the final part is the administration costs, that's all the district leadership, communications, human resources, finance, purchasing, tax office, all that is part of that, and it's just, it's almost 3%, it's like 2.9% is central administration. So as you know, like I said, our tax rate we're proposing tonight is going to be compressed. Last year it went down almost six cents, and this year it's going down almost 16 cents, so it's 22 cents is going down over the last two years. And you see, the year prior, the total tax rate was $1.14, and this year it's going to be just over 98 cents. And it's all from the MNO side, you can see the INS tax rate has held steady at 20 cents for the last few years, so the MNO went from 94 cents to 78 cents. And just kind of shows as compression, tax compression began, you can see it's dropped almost 40 cents of the total tax rate for taxpayers since 2017. So kind of what does all that mean? This is the first time we're actually seeing a reduction in property, property tax talsies for taxpayers who own homes in the district. So you can see the average house now is about $276,000 in that middle column, and with tax compression, what they would normally would pay was $3,317 from the first column, this year they're paying a little over $2,700, which annually they're saving almost $600 on their taxes per year, and that's on the average house here in CFB. So the next budget we're proposing is the Student Nutrition Budget, and it's, like I said, it's federally funded, it's, it's a different animal than the general operating budget. You know, TDA and TEA, they don't like the general, Student Nutrition Budget to turn profits, they want it to pretty much break even, they want it to cover the cost, and actually to go over, they want the general fund to cover that cost. So last year, they had that hold harmless where we were being reimbursed 100% whether the kids were eating or not, so it's looking like we're going to have a $2 million surplus this year, so that's a positive, and it's going to help us do some strategic things that we weren't able to do during COVID when it started to lose money, so as you know, a lot of the stuff is aging out, so we're proposing a $1.5 million deficit to make sure we stay under that range, to stay out of getting dinged on our audits with the TDA and TEA. So this is allowing us to replace coolers and ovens and stoves and things like that we weren't able to replace at a lot of our campuses. So we looked at the highest need area and we're going to start being able to replace stuff that we haven't been able to replace in the years previous. So this is part of our general fund balance, and like I said, it's a different animal than the Student Nutrition Fund. We, there's been a lot of talk in legislature about having to spend down our fund balance from the general fund, so what we did last year, and y'all approved it, and we wanted to approve again, is that we designate some of that fund balance to make sure, should this state do something radical and start making us spend our fund balance, that we designate some of it, so the only thing they can touch is the unassigned fund balance. So if we put 41.5 million in assigned, then only 100 million is free that's unassigned, that keeps us within that three-month range that the, that the state likes. So as you can see, we have $141 million total fund balance, including the 41.5 that we want to assign again, and it keeps us around six months of operating fund balance. Like I said, TEA recommends about three months, so we're double that at this point. This is our outstanding fund, this is all the debt that the district has, there's a little over $677 million in outstanding debt, and we were able to structure it, you know, based on our credit rating and how we financed the last bond, so you can see on the bottom line shows the first bond sale from the May election that we sold, and we are able to structure our debt, so, you know, normal, it's kind of like a house, you set out your debt for 30 years, so the way we set it up within 15 years, we'll have almost 50% of that debt paid off. And this just kind of shows the debt structure. In the beginning, you can see the light blue is the interest and the dark blue is the principal on our, on our bonds. So you can see we structured it kind of strategically to pay it off quickly in the beginning and then it levels off throughout the duration of the bond. And this is the Debt Service Fund that we're proposing, the far right obviously is the proposed budget for the year. We'll have $61 million in revenue and, or 61.5, and we think that, and our bond payment this year is going to be 61.5, so it'll be a balanced budget. And you can see the third column shows surplus this year of 4.6 million, and that's because we were able to refund those bonds earlier this year, where we saved a little over $4.5 million of interest, so that goes straight to our fund balance. And you can see we're going from 16.6 to over $21 million in our Debt Service Fund. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. So we just want to talk about some of the strategic abandonment strategies we're going to utilize as a district to attack that budget deficit, the 9.7. So the first one is staffing analysis. It's where we evaluate staffing needs and consider whether there are opportunities to restructure roles, combine positions, or utilize part-time staff where appropriate. And that's being led by Dr. Davis, his HR team, and finance, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Hill. He was working with us today to help identify some positions in transportation that we're able to remove from the budget, which assisted us in going down to $9.7 million. Thank you, Mr. Hill. The next one is continue to prioritize spending. Identify core programs and services directly contributing to student success and well-being. Allocate funds to these areas while consider trimming expenditures in nonessential areas. Data-driven decisions. We're going to utilize data analysis to identify areas where funds can be allocated more efficiently. We are evaluating student performance metrics, program outcomes, and cost effectiveness. And I just want to go ahead and acknowledge Ms. Holcomb and Ms. Rowland for the effort that they're doing, they're evaluating all the programs in their areas, and we certainly appreciate that, and that's just part of the process. So the next one is consolidation of resources, and that's where we determined, where we can consolidate resources to increase efficiencies, energy efficiency. And this is something we're working on diligently and is continue to implement the energy-saving measures for optimizing heat, lights, and cooling. And Mr. Moore and his team are working, like I said, diligently on that to help control those expenditures. Technology integration, that's leveraging technology to streamline administrative tasks, communication, and learning processes. This can help reduce administrative overhead and improve educational outcomes. Once, Dr. Stiles working on that, we appreciate all the work she has done and is doing and will be doing on that one. We will all continue to review contracts and agreements, because we can continually assess these to ensure that we, as a district, are getting the best value for our services. Incentivize attendance. We'll be providing incentives to increase attendance. Dr. Hamlin is assisting on that and working to help that. Expand enrollment. We are enhancing strategies and efforts to increase enrollment. Once again, Dr. Hamlin and his team are working very hard to implement those strategies to increase enrollment. And we will be providing monthly updates during the pre-meetings to report back on these strategies to see how effective they have been in, in reducing the deficit. We want to talk about some of the budget highlights and celebrations, some of the positives. The MNO Maintenance and Operation Tax Rate has been reduced by almost 16 cents. There's going to be a drop in property tax payments of approximately 18%. Average home will be lowered by nearly $600 in tax payments. Student Nutrition Fund Balance access allows Student Nutrition Services to make needed strategic purchases on appliance and equipment. And you can recall back during the pandemic, Student Nutrition really suffered because the revenue really decreased. They weren't able to make the strategic equipment purchases that were needed, so we're just in a great position right now with the way the fund balance is in Student Nutrition to be able to catch up and get some of those equipment and services that we need. The General Fund Balance, $141 million, very, very healthy, as Mr. Guerra stated. And last but not least, strategic abandonment strategies to increase efficiencies. It is recommended that you, the Board of Trustees, approve the 2023-24 Budget and Tax Rate as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh and Mr. Guerra. At this time, the Board will entertain questions and comments regarding the proposed budget and tax rate from the floor. And as explained before the presentation, interested individuals who have submitted a request to speak forms will be called to the microphone. Ms. Canada, have you received any forms or name indicating interest? No, so at this time, hearing none and seeing none. At 6:23 PM, this concludes our public hearing. So next, we will move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items. The Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, Board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarifications or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Ms. Herbochek?
I just have some, another question from the presentation into what I assume is 5C on our 2022-23 final budget. I can ask one question, consent or pull it?
We should probably pull it.
Okay, then I'd ask that that be pulled for individual consideration.
Okay. So we'll pull 5C. Any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? If there are no other items to be removed, I have a motion regarding the consent agenda as amended. Ms. Derrick?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of C.
All right, do I have a second? Ms. Brady? I have a second for Ms. Brady. Are there, is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? With a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries. And the next agenda item is number six, Items for Discussion and Our Action. We have an item that was removed interim consent, so we'll proceed to 6A. The title of the item is, go back, Consider and Approve the 2022-23 Final Budget Amendment for CFB ISD. Ms. Herbochek?
Thank you. Thanks for the information, and I appreciate the work from the whole finance team on, you know, the updates and, and re-looking at, you know, our final as we, what, we're in the last two weeks of our fiscal year? Yeah, so I'm going to, you know, that these are close to final, but one question on, there was a slide that had the 2021-22 actuals, 2022-23 budget, current budget, forecasted actuals, and then the proposed budget. That's the, it didn't have a number. It says Proposed General Fund Budget. And then our document in the agenda item in Board Book and then printed here, I am not able to tie the numbers that we see in forecasted actuals back to what's on this amendment. Could you help me make that tie?
Are you referring to the $344 million tying to the
Yeah, well, it's
Proposed General Fund Budget?
I guess the proposed amended budget on, in the amendment says $385 million budgeted expenditures, and then shows a net revenue and expenses of negative 1.3?
Was it on the power point this time?
Yeah, so this number right here, like this, the forecasted actuals right here, that would essentially be our final budget for '22-23 after the amendment, right?
Oh, okay.
And then on there, at the proposed amended budget, I'm not seeing the tie between those On here.
On the, on the amended budget to the proposed amended budget on the far right?
Yeah, the bottom has 385.
And you want to know how the 385 ties?
Yeah, I don't see 385 on the actuals under '22-23. What's the difference?
Well, the '22-23 is, that's our proposed to cover the each function. What TEA has like kind of a quirky thing where they don't want any function to go over budget, so it has zero to do with revenues and expenses, they just kind of, we get this little nasty letter sometimes that say, hey, you went over your function 12, if it goes over, so what they, it's a weird thing that they want us to, and audit, the auditors were here today, actually, they've closed out the audit for the year with us, they'll come back in December to do our closing entries, but we had to do our exit interviews today and we were talking about that exact thing where it's weird because TEA wants us to make sure we don't bust any functions, functions, so to speak, so we just have to do this, that's why that, the budget amendment, $68 million to make sure we don't bust any functions, because like I said, we're, we're doing a lot of adjusting entries, a lot of accruals that keep going through, really through December when we, when we finally get to close our books through audit. So we have to make sure that none of these functions bust from the TEA part of the audit, so this is, has nothing really to do with the actual revenues versus expenses, it's just something that TEA wants us to do in our final budget amendment to make sure we don't, we don't go over any functions through our expenses.
Okay, but then on Proposed Amendment Budget, the bottom in the green, it says net effect to fund balance is negative 1.36. Am I reading that?
No, I see it too. Do you see it, Giselle? No, I see it too. Do you see it, Giselle? Let me get, I'll get a clear answer for you, and then we'll send it an email to you, but it's.
Well, but what would we be voting to?
Well, the voting for the final, for the budget amendment would be the 385 million. You're voting for the 68 million, 68 million, 320,000 to cover the function expenses.
Okay. But this, we'll have something else come before us in a final position?
Yes, final position. There shouldn't be any net effect to the fund balance based on just covering the functions for TEA's audit.
Okay.
That should be zeroed out in all reality.
Board members, do you have any other questions? Mr. Shackman?
One of the things that is obviously a concern here, and I know some of you were talking with state representatives yesterday, but recapture has gone from, you know, in two years, has almost doubled. Is there anything we can do that will help make that a little better for us and easier to bear? I know like with the fund balance, we allocated certain amounts to specific items. So it saved it from being, dare I use the word recaptured by the state at this point. But I'm just concerned, is it going to continue to go up at this amount?
Yeah, recapture is kind of twofold. As enrollment is staying steady or declining and property values are increasing, we're only guaranteed a certain amount of wealth. Once we're maximized at that wealth, that's when recapture kicks in. So as property values continue to rise, recapture will continue to go up unless we get more kids or unless we get some recapture relief. I know we talked about there's going to be some, hopefully some recapture reform. I know we've teamed with a few other districts that are lobbying in Austin throughout this whole congressional period, and they're going to continue to do it during the third special call session. But that's one thing that they are looking at. I mean, there was talk from a couple of people that we sat with, from Ms. Hadfield, that said, just do away with recapture completely. So there's, Congress is aware of the effect that it's having with districts. It used to be like, hey, you're a rich district, like Highland Park was used as an example. But we told them, well, you know, we're 68% free and reduced. We're not an affluent district by any means, and we're paying $60 million in recapture. So they said that that would be part of the agenda, that session, special session three is going to be 100% school finance, and there's supposed to be some sort of reform talk on recapture as well. But it would take something by the state to change that.
Okay, I just want to bring our attention back to, we're still considering approving the 2022-2023 final budget amendment. So before we ask additional questions about the '23-24 budget, I think we need to close out this item. So Mr. Ratchek has asked a question. Mr. Gera, your response is we'll get additional information?
We'll get additional, like I said, in all reality, it should have been zeroed out because it's just a budget amendment to cover the functions. It has nothing to do with fund balance or a negative effect or positive effect on fund balance for that matter. It's just something to cover our functions through audit for TEA.
Okay. Ms. Ratchek?
Well, but I want to clarify that actually on that slide, I don't think the slide's up, but on that, the 2020, to Mr. Shackman's point, the recapture payment for the final amendment, the recapture payment went up. So that's, and would continue. So that's part of the amendments, you know, for it. From 36.3 to 56. I just wanted to clarify that. Shocking.
Yes, you can see that's function 91 in that list, and you see $22 million, that 68 is recapture. And like I said, it's twofold because of our enrollment, our ADA was down a little bit, and our property value, you saw the last year went up almost 13%, and this year went up another 6%. So as our property values go up, like I said, we're maximized at wealth. And that's what makes us a recapture district because we're only allowed so many dollars. And every dollar past that goes back to the state. So 22 million is straight to recapture.
Great point. Okay, so are there any other comments on the '22-23 budget amendment item?
I was just a general comment, you know, for an amendment of expenditures of this amount, you know, I, as a board member, have to take some accountability on this in that, you know, yes, we receive the monthly financial reports and we review it to the best of my ability or review it in our business decisions. We've obviously, as a board, made decisions that have led us to this point. We review, we ask questions, but Ms. Hadfield, and Mr. Marsh mentioned some of it, but, you know, I'd like to ask you that moving forward and that we, as a board, you know, insist that we modify how we get our information monthly from a, to make sure we understand our position to budget, the impact of the decisions that we make as a board. You know, there's nothing we all want more than to support our students, staff, and our schools. But we also have accountability to do right, and we just, we need to be aware.
I understand. I'll work with Dr. Eldridge to make sure we have included that in the pre-meeting updates, and we can circle back and make sure that it's meeting expectations of the board as we continue to make those modifications. Other comments? Okay, so at this time, does the Board wish to take action on the Consider and Approve the 2022-2023 Final Budget Amendment for CFPISD? Ms. Derek?
I move that we approve item 5C as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Derek. Do I have a second, Ms. Brady? I have a second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion? At this time, all those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed, the motion to approve item 5C carries. So next up is item 6B, Consider and Approve the 2022-2023 Budget, Including the Execution of a Resolution Adopting and Approving Said Budget. Mr. Gera, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Hadfield. Yes, so again, tonight, we are proposing a $344 million general operating budget for approval with the Board. So if you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Board members, comments or questions about this item? Ms. Derek?
I just want to make a comment about, I guess, all of this. I'm going to kind of piggyback on what you've already said, that I think it's important to note that our staff and taking care of our students is priority for us as a board, and we all recognize that. We want to treat our people well, and we want to make sure that our kids are getting the best education possible. But we have to figure out how to do that within a budget. That is the expectation. We are being held to that standard by the community that elected us, and it is our duty to ensure that decisions that are being made going forward are in the best interest of our staff and our students. And I think that, as a district, we can do this. It's going to be hard, but I just want it to be said that we recognize we're in a tough position right now, and we have to all be better. And you said it, we have to all hold ourselves accountable for this, but we have to be better. We cannot sit here next year looking at these same kind of numbers. It's not okay.
Thank you. Any other additional comments from board members? Ms. Ratchek?
And this is carrying on, you know, there's so many ways to approach developing a budget. And I know this because, as Mr. Gera, you know, I have to do it and sit in front of someone to get it approved. So I've been in your seat. So, you know, based on past actuals, trends, you know, assumptions, projections, and there's so much in our budget that is also not under the control of the local school board, which complicates a financial system that is already extremely, you know, complicated for it. But I agree, my expectation is that we do this within our means. And, you know, similar comment that, you know, going forward, you know, we request and figure out what we, as a board, need and request from administration on how to monitor the progress of that, of the development, you know, and making sure that our focus is on our students and our staff. That's where we want it to be and going through. But, you know, adopting, and I understand this is probably has, and there's been obviously work done from what we originally presented, and I appreciate that immensely since we had identified that as a priority. And there's obviously, you know, there's probably some worst-case scenario planning in here because sometimes that's what you do for a budget, and I get that. But, you know, a deficit budget is us authorizing us, you know, the district to spend beyond our means, and that is not sustainable, no matter what the situation. So we, as a board, just have to be better on what we request to make sure, you know, we know what's happening for us.
Additional comments from board members?
I would just like to comment again on the Chapter 49 payments with, because we call it Chapter 49, the Report, but then we also call it recapture. And Mr. Shackman, you also alluded to the fact that it's gone up so steeply, and then others have commented. And I think it's important that we all think about the fact that we have a special session coming up and that we advocate as a board for our needs with the legislature and with the Congress because if they don't hear from us, then they can make assumptions about what they think our needs are. And that was evident yesterday when we met with some members, that they need to hear our voice, and they need to know what we're facing and what we need. And so I think it's critically important that during the month of September, they indicated it could be the second week of October, that we also sit down and make sure that we're all clear on what we need to tell them to make sure they know. I think, Mr. Gera, one thing that we brought up yesterday that you brought to the table was tax transparency, which I hadn't heard it phrased like that, that our recapture money on a tax statement does not, the person that gets the tax statement does not see, this stays with your local school district, and this goes back to the state. And so that was one of the conversations we had yesterday, was advocating that they be more transparent on a tax statement so that the citizens know that it's not all staying with us because we are sending $57.9 million back to the state, which is huge. And our taxpayers need to know that it's not staying with us, it's going away. So I would just recommend that that be another thing that we look at, is how we can come together as a board to make sure they know the impact that not just recapture, but unfunded mandates are having on us like the safety and security measures, which we absolutely want to care and take care of our children, but we also have to have funding for those requirements. Any additional comments? Yes, Ms. Benavides?
I just want to say thank you so much for these highlights and celebrations because it is very important. Can you hear me? Okay. It's very important to display all that and be transparent because when we're talking about our home, which this is our, we are one family, this is very important. And I really appreciate everyone digging deep and doing a great job. Thank you.
Okay, so board, this item is marked for possible action. Does the Board wish to take action? Mr. Shackman?
And the statement that they were required to place in it? The budget. Okay.
Tax rate is 6C.
Right. Okay, so I move that we approve, as presented, the information about the budget and moving forward to the taxing for the coming year.
I have a motion for Mr. Shackman for item 6B. Is there a second? Ms. Garza Rojas, is there any discussion? All of those in favor, raise your hand. All of those opposed? By a vote of six in favor and one opposed, the motion carries. All right, our next item is 6C, Consider and Approve the Proposed Tax Rate for the Tax Year 2023, Including a Resolution Setting Said Tax Rate. Mr. Gera, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Hadfield. Yes, the tax rate, as you know, is being compressed again. And you, as a board, like I said, it's obviously a big celebration for the Board to compress the tax rate almost 16 cents. And should it approve, we will definitely send it out to everybody we know. We'll send it through all social media and make an announcement that the tax rate is being compressed again. So if you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
All right, board members, do you have any questions about item 6C? Ms. Derek?
I want to just, I guess, publicly ask about the language that we're saying it's an increase even though it's not.
It is, it's kind of confusing, but what they're saying is even though the tax rate has been compressed, we're going to generate more tax revenue, and that's because the property values have gone up. So even though the homestead exemption went up for residential, obviously no commercial properties get the homestead exemption. So as commercial properties continue to rise, we actually will collect more tax dollars. So that's why they're saying this is generating more tax revenue. So that's why they're giving that percentage. This is the exact verbiage that the state makes us mandate, just like I told in the workshop we had together. They make us word it that exact way. Ms. Brady had us, and we, like I said, we consult with our council as well and make sure it's exactly how we're supposed to do it, and this is what the state requires, and that's how it's worded that way.
Additional comments or questions about this item? I'll just remind board members that there is specific language that you have to read for this, that you have at your seat. And with that, this item is marked for possible action. Does the Board wish to take action? Ms. Brady?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of .98 through 60, which is effectively a 2% increase in the tax rate, with said tax rate consisting of a tax rate of .78 through 60 for MNO and .2000 for debt service.
I have a motion for Ms. Brady. Do I have a second? A second from Mr. Shackman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, the motion carries. All right, so our next item is item 6D, Consider and Approve Local Policies. Mr. Marsh?
Thank you, Ms. Hadfield. It is recommended that we defer those policies to the regular meeting on September the 7th. It's going to be in conjunction with a resolution and an approval for you regarding the individuals that will be approved to carry a firearm on the campuses.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. So with that recommendation from administration to defer, are there any questions? Ms. Derek?
I just want to make a comment since we just said the word firearms in our school board meeting, that this is all a result of the 88th legislative session, and it's related to House Bill 3 stating that as of September 1st, we are going to have to have an armed staff member or person on all campuses. That is a state unfunded mandate, and that is what we're referring to. But it sounds like we're deferring to the next board member, board meeting to talk about it.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Ratchek?
You said unfunded. I think we got 28 cents.
I stand corrected. We got how many cents?
28 cents.
28 cents per student for that mandate.
And $15,000 per campus. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions about this item? All right, so for the record, let it show, the item 6D, titled Consider and Approve Local Policies, has been moved to the September 7th meeting. The Board will now move on to the next agenda item, number seven, comments from board members regarding posted agenda items. Board members, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time related to the posted agenda? All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda. We are going to go Trojans at the football stadium, and we are adjourned at 6:49 PM.